I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, May 2nd, 2016 at 7:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Additions and deletions, I'd like to add fire department vehicle purchase on our new business, letter A, and slide the other three down if we could. That way we'll get you out of here quick, Chief.
Thank you.
We have two things. So under E, it'll be set public hearing for the 2016-2017 budget. And then under F, meat line stone recommendation.
I was just gonna cover that under my supervisor's report unless you'd like it different. Easier for you in the minutes that way?
It needs to be in the minutes.
That's fine.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with three additions.
Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion passes. Wow, I'm sorry, that's so bright. Hard to see. Approval of meetings, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes 4-4-216 and 4-7-216.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 4-4-2016 and 4-7-2016.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion passes. Public announcements. Public announcements at this time.
Now that it's on the agenda, I don't have anything.
Public comment. Any public comments at this time? No public comment. Consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public requests at a prior meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for our discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number 7 below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call, vote of those present and voting.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you want the bills in? You want the bill there?
That's right. Amendment of my motion to include the orders and bills at $208,431.60.
Supported. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by clerk Key. Once again, any other discussion or questions? Deputy clerk roll call please.
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchie?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Key?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes. Letter 8, there are no items removed from consent agenda. Number 9, there is no unfinished business. Number 10, our new business, fire department chief, vehicle purchase.
Thank you. I appreciate you adding that. Everyone should have a copy of my letter dated today. Everything was finalized over last week. Fire Department established a apparatus committee several months ago, and I informed the board a while ago that we needed to replace two vehicles, first one Rescue 2 because it's the most needed, and second engine 2 that's operating on Station 2. So, we formed the apparatus committee, which included myself, assistant chief and captain, two senior firefighters from the fire department, as well as our fire department mechanic. And over several meetings that lasted a couple of months, we developed a recommendation and a bid spec, which I then put into a formal RFP and sent to three different companies. And those companies are Kodiak Emergency Vehicles/SPAN Spencer in South Haven, Michigan, PL Custom Rescue/Rescue 1 there out of New Jersey, and Pierce Manufacturing out of Appleton, Wisconsin. Page 2, you'll notice that I've listed all the information, but before we get there, after we went through all the bid specs, which all five of us did, everyone but the mechanic, first we were shocked at the one price, I mean really totally shocked, and the second one was pretty outstanding. And then we realized, Marty and I spent, I mean page after page together on Friday, we spent the whole day Friday going through all bid, three bid specs, and we weren't really happy, especially with the company that we dealt with before, which was Pierce Manufacturing. It was almost like we got a computerized boilerplate and they put in just as little amount of effort as possible into the project. And we actually talked to the salesman on Friday and said, you know, we were really shocked at what we got, you've got items in there that don't even follow the RFP. Oh, well, you know, we used this computer program and then another issue that really struck out, stuck out in our mind, it was gonna take 17 months to build a rescue truck. And this is on a commercial Ford F-650 chassis. And I says, we don't understand it. Well then, the big picture got opened, they opened the door. Well, they just received an order for 48 fire engines from Kansas City Fire Department, an order from LA County for 10 aerial, and so on and so on and so on. So where does the little guy fit at the end of the line? Well, we can't wait 17 months. We can't. I mean Rescue 2 is in, it's in dire need to be replaced, and I take it on my shoulders, I should've done this a year ago, but be of that incident, it's made. So we went through all of them and we kept finding some additions in both the specs from PL Custom and Pierce, things that we didn't even spec, they put in the spec. Simple thing, we were very specific that we wanted hydraulic brakes on this truck. Okay? Our mechanic said it's more than capable of handling what we're gonna do with this medium duty box truck. We don't need air brakes on it. Pierce put in air brakes. Well, with air brakes, then you've got an air container, and you've got an air pump, and then you have an air shoreline. Well, all those things add extra money. Well, we can take it out later. Well, that's not what was in the RFP. So basically, they didn't follow the RFP, like I said. And the very first page, the RFP was very specific. Give me in calendar days, how long is it going to build this truck? And Pierce put in 17 months. PL Custom put in 16 months. Kodiak Emergency, they put in a specific amount of days, which was 240, which is eight months. And they said, probably if they got the assigned contract, and this had no bearing on our decision, but if they got a signed contract in the next couple of weeks, that timeframe for build would probably be less than 240. If you go to page 2, I really spelled everything out in detail for you, and the difference in price. So for Pierce, they wanted $347,141,000. Loose equipment, equipment that we need to either replace or upgrade, we're including in the price of this truck. Okay? So when you come down to their total cost, $377,473, we only paid $410,000 for our last pump, so we really thought that was outrageous. Their warranty was also an issue for us on the body, that's what we're really concerned of, because we're gonna get a warranty from Ford. Pierce is only offering a 15-year. Well, this rescue truck's gonna do just like the current one, it's gonna need to last this township 20 years. Okay? PL Custom out of New Jersey, their price along with loose equipment, $366,667. They didn't give a lifetime warranty, but their build time was 16 months. And let me, I missed this on Pierce, the trade-in, Pierce is only offering us $12,000 on the old truck, and we know we're not gonna give very much money. PL Customs only offering $10,000. Now, of course, I'm going to put this truck up for sale, I'm gonna do like we did previously, and if we could get better, more money than whoever we choose, then that's how we'll do it. Then my final bid from Kodiak Spencer, $263,911. You add the loose equipment, that comes up to $291,523. Again, they have a lifetime warranty on the body, they have a build time of only 240 days, and they're giving us $14,000 for a trade-in. Adding to all of this, I came to me on Sunday, because this is a commercial chassis, I wonder how much we may be able to spend if we went to Russ Milney and go under county bid, how much we may be able to spend. So this is listed on page 3. So I asked all three manufacturers to give me, deduct what it would cost Lennox Township if we provided the chassis. So, two of them didn't get back to me until 4 o'clock today. Well, this was already done. But you can see the first paragraph from Kodiak Spencer, if we were to provide the chassis and version for Milney and supply to them, our cost would be only $199,367. But of course, then we're gonna be spending $58,000 or $60,000 down at Milney's. So at this time, and this was a unanimous decision by all five members, John isn't a voting member, he's a recommendation member on the apparatus committee, but the five, three officers, actually four officers, and firefighter Myers had unanimously recommended to me to bring to the board, to your request that you approve us purchasing the new rescue truck from Kodiak Spencer. And with that, if it goes to, if the board approves, I'd like to add into that, as we have every time we purchase a truck, approve 10% upfront change or approval into motion. That way, if we have any type of changes, I don't have to keep coming back to the board. I think Karen Ottenbacher has sat on a committee before, Karen Churchie, have you sat on apparatus committee before? And this is a common thing that we've always done, when I've come back to the board. The last thing that I can say about this whole project is, you'll notice I say loose equipment, loose equipment. In the past, every truck that we've ordered, and we've needed additional loose equipment, I've been able to go out to our regular vendors and actually purchase it cheaper and more cost effectively than these companies can do. But if they, you know, if I can't get a better price, then it's already in the bid spec. So I'll entertain any questions for you right now. One last thing before I, NFPA recommends any vehicle in the fire service that is 20 years old be reduced down to reserve status, and any vehicle that is 25 years old or older be taken completely offline. We are replacing a 1995 vehicle. Okay? So that's 21 years old, so according to NFPA, that should be on the road as a primary frontline vehicle, and that is the vehicle that runs the most out of all seven apparatus, because it runs out of Station 1 on every call except the storage fire, so.
I have a question for you. When you go to the third, you talk about the third page, if you walk the chassis through Russ Milney, but it's still, you're saying it's still $291,000. There's a...
Because he doesn't know how much Russ Milney he's gonna get it for.
Yeah, it says have cost.
Yeah, Karen, that would be our cost, including loose equipment through Spencer. Okay? But if we were to go through Russ Milney, the paragraph above, the cost to Spencer would be $199,367 without loose equipment. You'll notice I put that in parentheses right before it. So loose equipment is 20...
Twenty-seven.
Approximately $27,000 from Kodiak Spencer. Yeah, exactly, $27,612. And the other two come in at $30,000 and change.
You got a price of us providing, you're providing the chassis, but you just haven't gotten the price for the chassis yet.
Exactly.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm kinda confused on, because it says...
I had the, I actually had the salesman, because this was a last-minute brainstorm. What if we could, you know, if they're only charging us an extra $2,000 or a couple thousand dollars to have it at the place you order, then it's not worth our trouble doing it. But if we're talking $8,000, $10,000, $15,000 difference, then it's worth my effort. And I actually had the salesperson from Milney in my office today, and he said, yeah, I'll put together all the numbers, but we need to get step one first, and that whatever Spencer is specing out for the Ford chassis, we would send to Milney, so they could pair apples to apples, and he would give you a detailed breakdown with the cost.
So roughly with the 10%, in case of overages and stuff, what Denny is asking for is $320,675. Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. If it came to the point, anything above what that you guys, the board approves, I would have to come back. I'm predicting like in every apparatus we have purchased in the last 20 years, we've always come in under.
So until you know what Russ Milney can offer, you wouldn't know what the difference would be.
No. But it's only gonna be less, not more.
Right, right, I just, yeah, because we did that with a company truck once, we bought it through the Ford dealership in Port Huron.
Right.
And then we had it outfitted by a special company, so sometimes that works, but it's hard to say.
Well, when we purchased the new pickup truck three years ago, it's stickered at $58,000 and change, and we only paid $39,000 for it by going through Milney under the government spec and all the rebates they had at the time.
Okay, any questions for the chief? I make a motion to approve the chief to go through Kodiak Spencer to purchase the new rescue truck, not to exceed $320,675,000. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Key. Any other questions or discussion?
That's Kodiak, Michigan too.
Yeah, it's in South Haven, that was the other plus that I didn't mention.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Post. Motion passes.
I just wanna say that for the fire budget, actually Denny's been making sure that money is pulled out every year and put aside, so there will be no loan.
Right, no, we will pay for the whole thing, same with the engine 2, that's why we have the flood surplus that we do, because we knew these trucks were coming in. I wanna thank you for adding this, and thank you for support on the family issue, and Cam and I have already met regarding the roads, so whatever he proposes is something we both agreed on, so thank you, and I'm gonna head on out.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Letter B, Assessment Administration Services LLC Contract Renewal. Mr. Machek, Mr. Griffin. Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor.
Good evening, board.
Nice to see folks again, it's been a while, we're busy. The basic contract is the same we've had for the past several years, there's a small addition, and like everyone else, we have healthcare costs, our healthcare insurance goes up for the folks, for the most part, it's a nominal increase. And we also included in this contract an extension clause going after that, the three years, so if you wanted to, you can just extend it rather than going through the whole process of recommitting your proposal again. But, and those are options, they can change again in the next three years. And then like all our contracts with all our communities, there's a 30-day in-out for both sides. We, I think that if people aren't happy with us, we don't want them to be stuck with a contract, same with us, that keeps it flexible and it's worked very well with all the communities. So if there's any questions, I'd love to...
Not a question for them, but maybe Jody or Karen can interject on this. In the past three years, have we noticed, cost-wise, is it cost-effective using the company instead of having the in-house assessing? Because that was a big issue back then, whether it was gonna save us money or cost us more.
A lot of the other expenses are still there, you know, the legal fees for the assessing, and so I think it's kinda contentious.
The only other thing that I would have to say, a year ago, we put the admin fee on, that admin fee can cover assessing costs, so that helps us in that respect for that. But no, I don't think there's a big difference in, you know, what our expenses are, but because we have put the admin fee on, that helps us, reduce us some of that. Thank you.
For those that deal with them, or do more useery than obviously us, are there any issues? To speak of any major, I shouldn't say it's a little, I mean, there's always a little, that's gonna be everywhere, but anything major that could be...
Probably, our office is the one that is, works closely with Tom and Sess and Christine, and I have had no issues. The only problem that I have, and Tom and I kinda talked about it today, and we think we might have it worked out, is I have not yet settled with the county, I have my appointment tomorrow. I have never been this late in all the years I've been here. I did have an issue that, I don't know, I didn't understand why some of the other communities that you people worked with have already been down there and they're throwing up my face. Well, I've been settled with the county and couldn't figure out how that could happen when I couldn't get my numbers. But Tom and I talked about it today, he was telling Kathy and I about a situation that maybe we can work out, so.
Yeah, and Tom and I talked about that too, and it's a tough time of the year, but I think we could pull, probably pull someone from our staff and get them over here, and maybe we could just make it a point to make you first every year. Because it just, it's a matter of taking someone specifically to put that worksheet together, because the border review numbers need to be getting, especially with the AMAR situations that we have going on. But I think we can definitely accommodate that and make sure that you're first every year.
Just not time.
Can you put that right? I gotta live with the treasurer.
And we, like I said...
It's a pain in the rear end listening to her, because you're not getting your part done.
We'll, we'll make sure that she is not bothering you in the future.
Well, yeah, I can understand that, because she's gonna be...
So the next treasure.
Yeah, it's terrible for the treasurer, the way you drag it on and on and on.
Well, the problem is, is it's during the border review, just ended, and there's forms and stuff that is required to be turned into the state at that time of year. And some communities, the treasurer does the worksheet, some communities don't. But we can accommodate that, we'll take care of it.
We'll see, you get it under control.
Absolutely. It's just not...
Once Tom, you know, told us today about that, because he's kind of a fussy guy, everything's gotta be right, and I appreciate that.
Tom's at the picky end.
I don't wanna be, I've been in here 20, almost 28 years, and I'm not as far as I know I've ever done anything wrong yet, and I don't start now, but he did explain.
We've got employees that get things done very quickly, and sometimes there's errors we have to correct. There's nothing we can't fix.
Right.
And Tom's on the other end, he's methodical and slow.
Very much so.
And doesn't like to make any mistakes.
Right. And I appreciate that, but no, Christine's always very helpful with everything that we go to, and if I assess something and he doesn't have an answer, he makes sure he gets with Tom, so I don't have a problem with that. This was the only issue that I had, and it sounds like maybe we got it resolved as of today, I hope.
Yeah, I hope it'll be resolved.
Okay.
Any questions? I think the last thing we wanna do is do another RFP, so I make a motion to approve three-year extension. Is the 99,900, does that include the 3%? That's...
Actually, this for the 99, I think was less than 3% this year, but in three years from now, we decide to extend, the price would be 3% annually.
Gotcha.
And depending, you know, we can talk about that three years from now.
Include at the cost of $99,900 per year for three years.
That's the part.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
DPW seasonal personnel hire request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody should have received our request for our seasonal position. Again, this time of the year, spring is really, kinda had to start on us again. Like in previous years, we'd like to reallocate and rehire our seasonal person. Last year, we hired Dolan Bonikowski for the position. He worked with us all season until he left for college. Dolan did a really good job for us, worked really hard, asked everything we, did everything we asked of him. I did speak with him a couple of weeks ago in regards to returning to fulfill the seasonal position, and he was interested. So at this time, I would like to ask for approval to rehire Dolan back into the seasonal position, but at $10 an hour this year.
What is the justification for the extra dollar?
Two things mainly. One, we're not going through the retraining phase and rehiring phase, so he's able to hit the ground running. And two, to retain him and keep him, instead of him leaving for something else mid-season.
So you are right with the 9 that he was giving last year?
I know it was tough, he agreed to it, and he fulfilled his obligation to us, but I know it was difficult.
A bit some looking around, and the only other one I can find that's hiring is right now for seasonal worker, ground worker, which, and the description's pretty much what we do, is showing, which is a much bigger community, and they're paying $9.84 an hour.
Nine what?
Nine dollars and 84 cents. Just to throw it out there. And then those that, they're also hiring just hydro painters, and they're paying them $9.50 an hour. His duties would include grass cutting, weed whipping. I will tell you, if anybody's ever seen that, to find somebody at nine bucks an hour to weed whip those ditches, it's...
Those guys work hard, and they work in...
When it's 90 or something, we don't have to retrain this guy. I like the fact that maybe we might be able to keep him for four years while he's in school or something, along those lines.
Or if we went $9.50, that's what I was just thinking too. I mean, yeah, he deserves a raise, especially since we don't have to, like I said, retrain, he'll hit the ground running Monday, but we gotta be fair to everybody else that works here too. He does everything as far as lawn maintenance, how much, like painting hydrants and that type of thing, did he help you with that?
This year he's gonna.
He's going to?
Yes. Yes, this year we're on the rotation painting hydrants, so he will, he will be assisting in. And that's, that's one of those, if we, the three of us, we can move through it faster. You know, so that everybody's got a specific job, and we can just, we can knock them out in a lot shorter period of time.
See, now we have so much of a problem with the $10 an hour, except for the second position that you're asking for, so now you're asking for two people.
So now you're asking for two people, and we're adding $19 to the payroll. That kinda makes it hard. This comes out of the general fund, this is not, you know.
I understand. The reason for the, you know, like I, like I explained in my, in my letter here, you know, the reason I'm asking for a second seasonal person is, you know, the short work weeks, summer tends to be short, short enough, especially with most of these individuals going back to school. They have a lot to accomplish in a short period of time. And if I'm looking to achieve and try and complete these things, it would be much, much advantageous to have another person.
Yeah, what's the total time of the seasonal workers' camp from what to what?
Uh, I'm trying to remember when Dolan had to go back, last year.
It was the end of August, wasn't it?
So three months?
Yeah, I was gonna say it's beginning of September, but I think you're right, they ended up going back at the end of August.
So a little over three months, we're looking at seasonal help, and, you know, what I explained earlier too, we have, we have one person in that department right now, um, that's, that's been available for the last few weeks. So I, uh, I don't like a person running equipment by himself or being in a building, doing heavy equipment by themselves. I don't think it's a safe, safe scenario.
And Dolan has started Monday, so that would take care of that concern.
Once again, he's gonna put him to work. He's gonna be cutting grass, doing things, not gonna be somebody with him. Is, is, is the reality that if he got another person, nobody would ever be doing anything by themselves in your garage again, or cutting by themselves ever again?
No, um, theoretically, and that's kinda my, my thought is, you know, instead of having one, three-man crew, we could have two, two-man crews.
How much are you gonna ask to be able to do any of that?
What's, which part?
Going out and doing lawns and that kinda thing.
Well, I'm hoping that if I can set up a whole other crew, that I won't have to do lawns, I'll have a crew to do lawns, and we're able to do other maintenance items, specifically with the water sources.
And the second person will help with that? Maybe someone that should come out of the DPW money?
If we can do that, I'm okay with that. And like I numbered on, um, in my letter, you know, this person will be on an as-needed basis. I, I.
Do you have a hard time finding somebody that you're saying, one, two days this week and one next week?
Well, to be honest with you, it's very difficult to find somebody even at just 30 hours a week.
Extremely difficult.
Sure.
What if, what if, what if we went the whole time either?
Well, what if we went, instead of hiring another person, a fourth person, start working Fridays? I'm just throwing an option out there, I mean, that's gonna, that will extend the amount of time you get to do things, just the DPW, not everything. I mean, just tossing out there, I don't know how realistic that is, you know, how that works with the books.
My other thought was, and I know we've discussed this previous years, is hiring an independent company to come and do your lawn mowing, and then you and your person can do what you gotta do on the DPW part. Would that be cost-effective?
The last time I did that exercise, it was not.
That's kind of a meta. You didn't put in everything that goes along with having you, you know, the full-time people when you did that cost analysis. So I don't know if that's a true statement or not, you know, cause it hasn't been done in a few years, um, but at this point, I'm looking time to get something like that set up.
We're, we're not addressing the fact too, that we have a lot of maintenance issues on this building that have not been dealt with at all either. That's gonna sneak up on us real quick, and if you look at it in detail, it's getting time where these things need to be addressed.
So in other words, the second person is gonna be working 30-plus hours a week?
Not necessarily.
I think he would be able to coordinate that. And I, I did pose a question to, uh, Attorney Joppik too, if we, if we were able to hire somebody, right now, we don't hire anybody under the age of 18 years of age. Um, if we could hire 16 and above, if it meant somebody just cutting grass or weed whipping. So you're gonna check into that, we're gonna, we're gonna find out about that?
Yes, I'm gonna, uh, confirm with Labor Counsel Laura Hampspuebler of our office, who has expertise in that area.
I, I, even with an approval, I think this is gonna be very difficult to find somebody, um, that's gonna be willing to do that type of work for the short period of time.
How old is he?
Dolan was 18.
He is 18?
Yeah, so he should be 19 this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was listed in the advertisement, that they had to be at least 18 years old. That was always my understanding that, you know, if they were under 18, then there was a problem with that operating equipment.
Yeah, I, I'm sure we don't want him running the big stuff.
Sure.
Talking about a lawnmower and a weed whip type situation, and pulling weeds and things that, that, that job would be specific to. Cause I, I just think we're gonna have a hard time, it was, we did not have a lot of applicants the last time.
And, and.
Typically, the applicants we got as soon as they heard the days worked and the amount.
Right.
And want the job.
You know, part of the, part of the, uh, the position and the, and the job that you want me to do is to run this department, and also to explain the needs and, and things that, uh, go along with that. The second seasonal position is a need that was identified, you know, with everything as a whole that's going on. Right now, I'm asking to advertise and seek applicants for this position. If you're uncomfortable making this decision at this point, let's advertise for the position, see what kinda applicant pool we pull in. Once we get our season going, I have to come back to you to get approval for the hire of a secondary person at that time anyways. I'm looking just to try and perceive possibilities that may happen coming up.
How many hours do you think, do you like to have the third person there, or technically, fourth person? I, I mean, are you looking at like maybe two days a week?
Two days a week would even be helpful, if I can find an applicant that's willing to just do two days a week. You know, because there still are days where I'm doing administrative duties, then I'll have to find something else for that person to do while I'm doing that.
Jody, where, where would the money come from for this? Do we have it? Like you said, it's actually $19 an hour.
Right.
I mean, where would it come from?
Right now, both the seasonal and Patrick are paid for out of the general fund. So it'll be coming out of the general fund.
Anything that covers the general fund is supplemented by the PTA fund.
That is not a trust to me. It's taken from the general fund savings account that Shawn and.
What is our other revenue fund?
Pardon me?
Our other revenue fund is the PTA fund.
Yeah, we also have a savings account.
Correct.
For the budget, for the general fund.
Correct.
That covers when we overdo the operating.
It's board's pleasure.
Based on what I said earlier about $9.50 and what Chris had come up with, with what some of the other areas are paying, I think we can go with Dolan for $9.50, go ahead and advertise for a second seasonal position, and go from there and see what kinda rates we get, you know.
Well, I think that he might be, be very honest with that, because like you said, it's hard to get them. I'm saying advertise maximum three days, and that way you're not, you know, they're not thinking they're gonna get more. You're not gonna be bothered with people that are gonna come in, spend your time on interview, and then all of a sudden, not wanting, cause it's not enough.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, tell them maximum three days, $9 an hour.
And, and you can ask Karen, cause Karen said that, said in on many of the interviews, it's usually the first statement I make after introductions.
Right.
As far as what the job is and what the specifics are. And we've actually had people go, I didn't know that, and it was clearly in the advertisement.
Right.
So we had people, they, you know, in less than five minutes, and they're, they're back off the door.
And even going through the last process, we had a gentleman last, how many days?
Two weeks.
Was it two weeks?
I didn't think it was that long.
But I think it, it, you make it like a retired person or somebody like that, and if they know upfront that it is only, you may find somebody that way better.
So they actually watch that.
Yeah, yeah, they don't want a full time, but they could use a couple of days, so, I don't know, maybe that's what we should do. I don't have a problem with Dolan, you know, he was a great worker in that.
Yeah, he was.
And I agree with Karen, you know, give him $9.50, that gives him a little bit of a raise, and then advertise for the other. Make sure it's in there, that it's, you know, not a full, like you said, you have a hard time finding people for 30 hours.
Sure, and, and to be honest with you, once we get past some of these, um, larger projects, you know, that's when the, the largest need for that fourth person will be gone.
I'll make a motion that we hire Dolan, I don't remember his last name.
Bonikowski.
Bonikowski, Bonikowski. Rehire him for $9.50 per hour, and advertise for another seasonal person at $9 an hour, maximum three days per week in the advertisement.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Backup inspector hired. Everybody should have the email from, uh, Building Department to the Limestone Board. It's for a plumbing mechanical backup inspector. He's asking the board to consider Kelly Smith. He is a pedestrian, has been recommended for the position. Dennis Lemieux met with Mr. Smith last Thursday. Uh, he seems to have pleasant demeanor, and, uh, he thinks it will work well with the residents of Limestone Township. Um, I had, I had Dennis interview the individual, and give his recommendation, because he'd be working with him hand-in-hand with the Devolus Department. He is recommending, uh, Mr. Kelly Smith for backup to Mr. Penovich.
Where is, uh, Mr. Smith from? His name sounds familiar, but I don't.
Um, East China. His address on the, his residential, uh, departmental license, Residence Code Office, Official Inspectors, uh, East China, Michigan.
His name is familiar, cause this is the one that was presented before.
That's why I thought.
Any questions? This, this is the one I believe too, that Steve Penovich recommended, two Dennis Lemieux. We actually had Dennis Lemieux interview him also. Strictly a backup.
We've been talking about needing a backup for some time, so I'll make a motion that we take, uh, Dennis Lemieux's, the building officials', um, recommendation to hire Kelly Smith as our backup for plumbing and mechanical inspections.
Support, thank you. Motion by Treasurer Adenbacher, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. Letter E, um, set public hearing, 2016, 2017.
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for the 2016-17 budget for the regular scheduled meeting of June 6th, 2016.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. Letter F, limestone recommendation.
Who supported that?
Karen.
I'll say. Letter F, limestone recommendation. Um, once again, we received three miles, um, for the limestone program at a cost of 10% to the township, 90% to the county. I received this from Cam Tremblay, recently, he had a chance to drive the gravel road portions township this week, and typically, he confers with Mr. White and Mr. Fache, uh, to find out which is, you know, the highest needed areas. He also conferred with the supervisor at the New Haven Yard from the Combe County Road Commission. And the three miles that they came up with, number one is 31 Mile Road from the Richmond City Limit west to Low Plank Road, one and a half miles. Correct? And, and, Cam, if I could come up here for a second too? And then number two, Forest Road from Richmond City Limit south to intersection of 31 Mile, it's .5 of a mile. And number three, 30 Mile Road west from Grashit, one mile. There was something that overlapped that had been done in, I think, '05, if it wasn't mistaken, I don't remember, but these are need immediate, they're immediate concern.
That is correct, uh, number one, the 31 mile road section from, uh, from the Richmond City Limit going west to the intersection of Low Plank, that was done in '05, that was one of the very first sections that we had done in the past. But over the years, a lot of traffic, um, different ground conditions, um, that rose in the direction of another application. We did receive, uh, not only us, but the Road Commission did receive numerous calls and complaints about that section of the road. And not so much this past winter, but the previous winter, where we did have heavy frost, um, that road was almost untravelable at times. So, um, we deemed that that was a high traffic, or highly needed area that, uh, needed this limestone. The second location, Forest, um, from the Richmond City Limit to the intersection of 31 Mile Road, is actually a small Y-section. It does equate to about a half mile in total, so it will not only be the Grashit or, I'm sorry, the Forest section from the city limit, but also include the Little Section at Lees. The third area, um, was 30 Mile from Grashit going west, approximately one mile. And, uh, if you kinda look at the map, uh, hopefully that kinda starts to set us up to help start the blocks and areas to keep continuing with this project in the future.
Finishing off areas connecting other applications to the new applications.
As well as that short section, especially to Forest, um, does have a high traffic counter area, and does get beat up tremendously.
Any other questions?
Um, I'd like to ask a couple of residents questioning. Mickey and Kirby, what's 28 Mile?
28 Mile? On our side?
Is it 20, yeah. It's okay.
It's, yeah, it's not bad, good.
Cause I know for a while there, we had that sink swamp area.
Yeah, I don't know, somebody came through, put some kind of black stuff. Did you see that, Kirby, on 28? I have no clue what it is.
28's been good, and we just did an application on fog, frost, not too long ago too, so that's really been helped that area there through.
Yeah, actually with 28 Mile Road, uh, I believe it was two years now, um, the Road Commission actually did ditching on the north side.
Okay.
From, uh, from Grashit all the way to the Salt River, because there was no, there was an existing ditch. So a lot of the water would lay, not only what was left of the ditch, but part of the road, that road would never dry up and heal.
Yeah.
It's, the first year, you can see the difference, but it was not healed, and every year, it just is continuing to get better.
I know, cause there was times when I'd be driving to go to the fire stake. I know, because there was times when I'd be driving to go to the fire stakeout. It was like, am I going to make it through this road, you know? So I didn't know how. And they were crowding it wrong for a long time. Just wanted to make sure they were taken care of. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to use the DPW's recommendation for limestone recommendation, limestone deployment.
Application.
Application, there you go, for 2016. The three miles recommended.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
And just on a quick note, last year, we did do the section of frost road with the limestone. We also discussed about ditching. When I did meet with the supervisor over at the road commission, I did bring that up and he pointed to me, he goes, it's on the board. He goes, well, you were still just struggling. And it was, I did see it. But they just, you know, they struggle because of other things that come up to get to that project, but it is, is still on their radar.
Did we know?
Well, I can honestly say I did physically see it on the board.
We did initiate, when we initiated our limestone program mapping, we did initiate a ditching program with Mr. Hotner that we wanted to get more aggressive with it, and it's time and money permitting. So we've got things on the radar. We're in contact with them. It's their resources, whatever they can get to do it, they're going to do it, so...
Well, and actually, the limestone program has been around for a lot of years, so the ditching was included.
Any public comment at this time? Closed session. Discussion regarding the purchase of real property.
I make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real property.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Eight twenty?
Twenty-two.
Eight twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All roll call. Clerk, roll call please.
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchy?
Aye.
Adenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes. Closed session.
Back into open session at 8:44.
Support. That was it. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. All those in favor? Aye. Post.
Okay. I make a motion that we authorize Steve Joppick from our attorney's office and Sarah Metzke from our engineering to proceed with negotiations of the property acquisition as discussed.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:45.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Again, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Being adjourned.